Okay, good morning, everybody. We are coming out of our executive sessions. The time is ten oh five AM. No action is to be taken as a result of either executive session. And with that, we will move into our Superior Court briefing. So Judge Goodell is on, Judge and Jim Madsen. Judge, I'm gonna go ahead with your briefing.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Yes, we're back before the commission today with a request for a new position. The, we're asking for an administrative secretary slash judicial assistant. This is not the first time they come before the commission, they're asking for this position. A reminder, buddy, briefly, I know we've been over this many times. That we did a review on our, our first phase of analysis. And have come to the conclusion that we need this position. Very busy court. Judges and a court commissioner and oftentimes have four different courtrooms going at the same time. All of our courtrooms are still virtual and in person, which means that we're doing a hybrid model. Some are purely virtual, which means that we have to have somebody from court administration to establish and monitor those people are coming and going all the time. There's sometimes people cannot be in the session and they have to monitor that for the bench. We try that doing that, but we can't always keep on top of them. So it's, it's taken up staff level. The, our court administrator, Mr. Madsen, is continuously have to do staff level work, which pulls him away from doing his administrative work. That is, that we need him to be doing and not only our general court, but also in our juvenile court and our treatment courts. His oversight covers all of that. We have found, I think that Jim's been in this position for about a year now. We have found time and again where we have needed his assistance in dealing with things. And he's simply not available. And so you're sitting behind the bench and something's going awry, you need your court administrator to deal with it. Unlike other elected officials, judges are unable to do a lot of things because we can't have contact with parties who are before the court outside of what happens on the record. Things happen outside of the courtroom that we need to have be on top of, and we need someone to be able to do that. I'm not saying this happens all the time, but it has happened enough of the times that it has put into jeopardy our ability to run our court, plain and simple. So, once again, we're back before the commission, asking for this position. There was a suggestion, I'm not sure when that meeting was, I think it was last fall, that there be a lean analysis of the Superior Court to determine the appropriateness of this new position. So the court took it upon itself to work with the state auditor to work through what would be necessary to do a lean analysis. What it would all entail and Jim could probably speak to that a little bit better, but as we worked through the process of getting one set up, it became apparent that this is not the type of analysis that the lean process deals. Lean processes deal primarily with a function, how to make a function more efficient and bring the team together to kind of work through this function and try to work all the the kinks or whatever, make it more efficient to work through that. And when they understood what we were talking about, this is not the type of an issue that a lean analysis would benefit. So we did not further pursue that. So I don't know if there's more information that the commission needs. We provided the information several times. I'd be glad to answer any questions that we have of our needs. But once again, we're just asking for an additional staffing level position slash judicial assistant. Jim, is there something that you, I might have overlooked that you'd like to touch on?
No, I think you hit on it pretty well. Just a reminder that this position is different than the, the three positions that we do have up here. Meaning that they are not a court reporter, but what this position does have is being a bailiff. And so the help that we get from that is our bailiffs are extra help positions right now. And those can be difficult to recruit, screen, train, and then hold on to those people for any length of time. And this would provide some stability to that position because this person would in effect be a person that can go down and, and be a bailiff to, to help out when we're doing trials. And especially if we're double setting trials or as we are in the pandemic, needing more bailiffs to try to manage jurors and spacing and that kind of stuff. So just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, great. Thanks, Judge and Jim. Commissioners, any questions or feedback for Judge Goodell? Commissioner Miller?
Your Honor, one thing I'd like to say is we need to find a way to work with you when it comes to your microphone. I have a really hard time hearing you. I'm not sure what that is, but each time. Is there, is there an opportunity where this could benefit if we were to extend any type of new services into the North Mason area? As we come closer to talking about doing some expansions up there with the facility that's going to become available soon. In the old days, we used to have court of visual, video court.
Right. Well, I, I, this is news to me, so I don't, I haven't really considered this. The district court is able to have a north end court and a south end court. They, in fact, for years, that's how district court did operate. But the Superior Court, I'm unaware of our ability, although I do know that there's some regional justice centers and places like King County where they did, they do do things that are outside of the county seat. I, that's always the concern when we start talking about the Superior Court being someplace else. So I'm not certain that that is available. I had not considered such a thing.
Commissioner Trask?
So Judge or Jim, if you could explain again the difference between the bailiff in this new position, how, how do they, how would they coexist?
Well, the, the idea is that this would be, right now, on our, on our, our jury trials, especially over a building 10, it takes two bailiffs during certain portions of the trial to manage the fifty some odd people that are in the pool. So we have a primary bailiff and then we would have a secondary bailiff. This secondary bailiff, this position would fill in during those time periods. And so we would not have to bring in a separate bailiff to do that. We would have this position that would fill in those, those, those voids during portions of the proceedings. As the, as a trial progresses, a need for two bailiff does not always exist. It just, a lot of it depends on the trial, depends on the the involvement of, of the community that want to be there to observe and it's an open court. And so managing those type of issues is, is where we look to two bailiffs. So we would always have our primary bailiff, this position would be filling in where the, where needs be, but we, we definitely have that need.
So, so what, the, the COVID restrictions, I'm sorry, Jim.
Go ahead.
Once the, the COVID restrictions are gone, which I'm hoping is sooner than later, and we have building 10 complete. Is it going to be, is it, it's never going to be easy, right? So will, will it be easier managing when you're in one building rather than two or three?
We are still grappling with what it looks like to have a jury trial in the historic court, courthouse. Because even after the restrictions that we know exist today are reduced, we don't know whether they're reducing too. And so, and you know, we, we will still need to have more than one area in order to work our jury pool, we know that. And we always have. And how, how big of an area is something we don't know? And I, I stopped predicting how the whole COVID is going to affect our courts a long time ago. I, I, I had no idea that we'd be half years into it and still in need of building 10. I, I don't know the answers to that, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'd like to, to jump in. I, you know, I, I made a comment about the position would help kind of stabilize the bailiff. And what I meant by that is that you know, having some history with our detention center and having extra help over there. These positions, bailiff positions are extra help and the nature of those positions can be difficult because it's a limited type of pool of people that apply for these positions. And as hours fluctuate and their availability kind of comes and goes, it feels like it's a nonstop revolving door of trying to fill and have a big enough pool of people to do the work, but not having too big of a pool to where people start leaving because there's not enough hours to go around amongst, you know, multiple people. And so it's a, it's a fine line. And what I've noticed over this year plus that I've been in the position is that as we're asking for a position for help within this office, there are times that our current staff in the office here have to run down to building 10 to assist doing bailiff duties for one reason or another. Doesn't happen, you know, every trial, but it happens on a regular basis. And and so to, the way to mitigate that is to open up and hire additional people to have in your pool. But then again, you're trying to manage these people who are trying to get hours and working for you and they've, you know, if they're not getting enough hours, then they, they tend to leave. And so you're constantly training and it's kind of this revolving door. And so having a person in this office that part of their duties is dedicated to be able to do that allows those that are already in this office that have, that are in a different job class to continue doing the work that they're supposed to do up here and not being pulled, which then further exacerbates the at time shorthandedness that we have in the office. So hopefully that helps explain a little bit.
It does. Thank you.
Great. Mark, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Shutey. So, so I've actually had the opportunity to go talk to Jim about this, this need as well as, as Deb Gould, our previous HR director. Deb actually wrote up a analysis of what she dug into the details of it. I definitely see in her analysis, and maybe this is a question for Jim and Judge Goodell, that this individual really is administrative support in the bailiff side of things is kind of just a fill in piece. So the administrative support side of it is really where the help is needed. So when this position was created for Jim, the position that he replaced was not a court administrator. It was, it was really like a lead judicial assistant. And so a lot of the duties that that individual had done were, were administrative duties, answering the phone, you know, helping organize schedules, doing day-to-day tasks that have fallen on Jim in addition to his administrator duties, which it just isn't, it's just not realistic to say that it's going to keep going. When you look at Jim and the, and the functions that he performs and what he covers, it's so broad that it's, it's actually scary to, to really look at some of the details of how much time he has to spend on, on each individual item. And thank goodness, he's an exempt employee because he, he works quite a few more hours than, than we all probably realize. So both Deb and I talked about our individual discussions with Jim and, and agreed that, and what she had put in here, Jim, I, I don't know if this is what you're requesting, but the, the requested position was range thirteen. So the judicial assistants and the court reporters are actually at a, at a range nineteen. And so this, this position would actually be lower than the judicial assistants and the court reporters. And it would actually help doing the, help do the day-to-day administrative duties as well as filling in when we have a need for the bailiffs.
Great. Appreciate that, Mark. So I'll just say, I'm, I'm actually supportive of moving forward with this. I think one of the other things that, that hasn't really been mentioned here, but is pretty important, in my opinion at least, is the fact that in about two months, we'll have a new judge on the bench in Mason County. And you know, with that is going to come probably some, you know, additional work on Jim's part, helping with orientation and transition. And I'm not sure that, I mean, he would, he would probably argue, and I would agree that, you know, he doesn't have a ton of that capacity right now, let alone in July when he's onboarding and helping to, to essentially transition to a new judge on the bench. And so I think this is probably as good a time as ever to, to look at how we can provide some additional administrative support for Jim in the court as they go through this transition. So I am supportive. I'm not sure if we're at consensus on, on moving forward with it, but I, I think that's an important element of what the next several months, next year is going to look like for Superior Court.
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive. I, on my walks outside, I see bailiff or, or a staff running from building to building also. And so I know that you guys are pretty stinking busy and, and I know Jim's busy. And, you know, the judges are pretty busy too.
I'm supportive.
Okay, Judge, there's, there's your answer. Jim, there's your answer. I guess just work with Mark on getting this moved on to an action agenda here in the future and all the other details that have to go along with it.
Thank you so much, Commission.
Commissioner Trask, I have to step out for a moment. Would you mind taking the reins as we move into Community Services just for a minute?
Sure, absolutely. All right. So I guess we will move into Community Services and it's Kel.
Good morning. I think this is the only thing on the agenda from our team today. And just wanted to, this is something we've been meaning to do for quite some time and we finally got our act together. I have been joined by Todd Cunningham and in our building department. And maybe Ian, I don't see Ian on, but anyway, we're just going to update you. Okay, hey.
I'm here.
Awesome. We're just wanting to update you guys monthly now on our permit turnaround times and such. So, you know, back in the worst of times, it took people quite a while just to wait to get in the door and submit their permit application. And we, I am proud to say now that folks who want an appointment this week can still find some availability as well as pretty much anytime next week. So we're, we're really good on submittal appointments as far as availability. Also on our inspection requests, so building, building inspections were about two to three days out. That was also, there was a, a time even pre-COVID where we were a bit farther out than that and that caused some delays for, it was really frustrating for the building community to try to, you know, in their timing of, of construction, having to wait so long for inspections. So we're feeling good about our inspection turnaround times. And also we have filled that position that we had vacant for several months after Christian left us. So Josh Corgers started on May second and we hope to have him up and running shortly here on his own. So that's really good news for our department. On the single family residential turnaround times we're looking at, and Todd's going to cut, cut me off if I'm incorrect here, but it looks like we're running a solid eight weeks. And that's, you know, if we could keep it under 12 weeks, that we're doing really well. So about eight weeks there. And on commercial, I think it's a little bit quicker than that, but it kind of depends on how much commercial we get in since Todd is currently our only commercial plan reviewer. I saw Todd, you, do you want to jump in there?
Yeah, we're running about forty to forty-five days on commercial projects. And of course, that depends on the complexity and the quality of plans we get as well. If we get a good set of plans and the clouds part and the birds sing, then we're good to go. Outside of that, if we get a incomplete set, then we have a little bit longer of a time for turnaround, a little bit of back and forth. So that's where we're at.
And then before I turn it over to Ian, if you wanted to add anything on the septic permits, is that you all know we're hiring a fire marshal. He, Randy Collins, he'll start May sixteenth, so that's next Monday. And he's going to start at point six FTE, so he's going to start at three days a week. And we'll just, you know, see how that goes. If he needs to add more time, he will. And if it needs less, that as well. But he's going to be, you know, building our fire marshal program back up from where it was about ten to 12 years ago, in addition to just doing the plan review and inspections. So we're super excited about that and I think that will complete our team. We still have a permit specialist position open, but otherwise we will have a full team. And Ian, if you wanted to say anything?
Morning, Commissioners. The numbers I'm reporting today are EH or environmental health, building review turnaround time. So from the time that we receive a building permit that needs environmental health review, we're now reviewing plans that are, that have been received on April fourteenth. So we're, I don't know, two to three weeks behind right now. And then septic permits that we receive, they're being reviewed. We're reviewing permits that were received on the twelfth of April. So about the same turnaround time for each review on building permits as well as septic permits. And last year in the month of April, we received eighty-two septic permits. If there's other numbers or stats that you would like to hear in future updates, let me know. But those are the ones that I thought were most informative or helpful to you. Thanks.
Well, that's, that's awesome. I, I'd love to hear how you've improved so much and through your direction. So I really appreciate that, Kel. Any questions for Kel? And now that Commissioner Shutey is back, I'll turn it back over to him.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, anything for, anything for Kel? Commissioner Miller? Great. Okay. Yeah, good conversation. Definitely some progress. They're really excited about the fire marshal opportunity that we have. Mark, I see your hand up.
Yeah, Kel, could you talk a little bit about what you're working with on SmartGov? To get additional details out of the system or am I off base? I look like I'm off base by the look on your face.
I just didn't know what, I mean, because we meet month, we have a monthly, a team that meets monthly on SmartGov improvements, but were you wondering about some?
The current, the current, the current questions that you have for SmartGov in incorporating some additional functionality within the system, it seemed to me like those would help provide more data and reports to the board regarding the status of, of each one of these efforts.
Yeah, I mean, SmartGov does have a lot of reporting capabilities. And if you are interested in seeing anything in particular, we could certainly work on that or see if it already has that function. But, but yeah, we are, we are in a continuing improvement process for SmartGov. So it's, it, you know, it is functioning. It, it could just be utilized a lot better and we're just continuing to work forward on that. So.
And is that the mostly the digitization, digitization side of?
Yeah, we, we are, we're kind of in that transition from, we're not paperless by any means, but there are some things that are paperless now, you know, like, for example, on the planning side, we have, we'll, we do a, we offer site pre-inspections. So people could apply for that online and there's no paper exchange. We're a ways out for doing that, I think, on the, you know, just a single family residence. But we are accepting when people submit their permits. We highly encourage that they bring their submittals on a thumb drive or send it to us electronically. You know, work with your permit tech on, on that. Definitely don't just send us stuff electronically without an appointment. You might get lost in the, in the email world. But, but we are certainly working on that transition so that submittals are uploaded into SmartGov and available for everyone to view at the same time internally. And not exactly sure how that works externally, what items people could see on the outside. But our SmartGov portal, I know, I know applicants can see what is in there and what's not. I just got a call this morning from a gal that indicated she had sent stuff and hadn't seen it yet. So we got those uploaded and so the public is able to see, see those items. And I, I haven't done that. I should make myself an accountant, go in and see what the, what the public is seeing.
Thanks. Great. Hey, Mark, did you have something else?
Just the question to the Commissioners. If you, if you have metrics that you'd like to see associated with planning and permitting, if you could shoot those to me, then, then maybe we could create some, some status reports or something. Hopefully it wouldn't be too difficult to, to kind of give, give you a gauge or some common reports that we could, that we could provide that would give you a visual representation of kind of where we're at.
Great. Yeah, it's a great idea. So then we can, they kind of put some thought into over the next week or two and get that to you and Kel. That'd be great.
And I know we, we used to get a, a printout of how many permits and, and what type of permits they were. I think that would be, that would be useful.
Yeah. And that's something I could send, you know, Mariah said, each month I get a report from Mariah and it has, it goes back to 2019, which is when we transitioned to SmartGov from tide mark. So I could send that to you guys each month in an email and then it, it breaks it out by permit types and then the numbers. So you can look month to month or, you know, year over year and through, through 2019.
That might be something that, that we want to share during a briefing and that way those watching can, can see what's going on too.
Anything else, Commissioners? Kel, anything else for us?
Nope, that's it.
And is that everything that we have today from Community Services?
That was the only, the only agenda item.
Right. Great. Thanks. We will move on now to Public Works and I see Loretta has popped on the screen.
Morning and is about to pop on as well. Yep, I believe. So we've got a couple items here this week, Commissioners. First up, we're requesting to purchase a flatbed equipment trailer. And Mike has the details on that.
Morning Commissioners. We'd like to purchase this smaller flatbed trailer. It can be towed around with our F-550 pickups so that we can be more efficient with the smaller equipment we're moving around. If you want to see someone in action, we're actually out on Brockdale Road right now doing paving some shoulders. So we'll be there most of the day. But if we get this, this will be off of state bid, state contract, and it's within our budget limits.
Commissioners?
I'll jump in. It looks like a pretty, pretty nice trailer.
Yes.
So what, so how, how much can it, and it probably says, but I just didn't see it. How much, what's the towing capacity, I guess? So what, so how, how much can it, and it probably says, but I just didn't see it. How much, um, what's the towing capacity, I guess?
Uh, this, this, I, I can't remember what the exact tonnage is, but, uh, it, it'll take care of our small rollers, pavement rollers, our, uh, our broom and there's just a smaller equipment there.
Twenty-one thousand?
How much?
Looks like sixteen thousand, seven hundred pounds.
And what are you using currently? One of the big trailers?
Say again?
What are you using currently? Is it one of the bigger trailers?
Yeah, they get used, they, they gotta use a ten yard dump truck to pull one of the, the big equipment trailers. And they put the small roller on there. So this would free up the, uh, the dump truck and the, and the other flatbed trailer.
That's cool.
Make it more efficient.
I'm supporting.
Same.
Uh, I am as well.
All right. Thank you Commissioners. And next up, we have a tip amendment that is proposed. And we're asking that you set a hearing to consider an amendment to the tip. And this is primarily due to the fact that we've got extra money coming through from our, our state, our STP funds. And Mike and team have quickly gone to work to identify ways to make use of those funds.
Yeah, uh, here recently, the, uh, the feds have dumped about fifty million dollars into the STP program. And they said that you can use it as long as it's obligated and, uh, go to construction for this year. So that's a, that's quite the, uh, challenge, uh, at this late, uh, day in the game. So, uh, we like a challenge. So what we're going to do is, uh, recommend to, uh, recommend to, uh, to extend this Mason Lake project. Currently we're at five point two-three to six point two-three. We'd like to start at six two point two-three and go all the way to Mason Benson Road, which is about ten point one-three. So it'll be, uh, a three point nine mile project, uh, about one point eight million dollars. And we've, uh, the first process is to actually change the, or amend the annual construction program and the six-year tip. And, uh, and, uh, then we can actually get it on a statewide transportation program and start the ball, ball rolling. So we're requesting that you, uh, put this on the board's agenda for tomorrow uh, to set a public hearing for, uh, June seventh to add this to the, the program.
Okay, Commissioners, anything for Mike on this? Questions, feedback?
I'm supportive.
Okay, I am as well.
Okay, then next up Commissioners, we spoke about this a little bit last, but the, um, the news release for the Fill the Truck event for Public Works Week. And this has the details of where the, the trucks will be located and when and where the, the collected donations will be, um, um, used. So we're asking permission to read this news release on the agenda tomorrow. So this is kind of a, a fun event. Uh, the, the locations within Shelton will be um, done jointly with the City of Shelton. And then we also have a location up at the Belfair QFC. And items that we collect are going to be donated to the Saints Pantry Food Bank in Turning Point.
Commissioners?
Oh, I think this is awesome. I, I love the idea. I love what you're doing here. It, it's, uh, showing that the county cares. So I support it.
Great. Yeah, thanks to Kelly and Amy and, um, working closely with Brooke at the city and appreciate, appreciate their legwork on this.
Yeah, this is, I think this is a really neat opportunity for us to, to get out there and, uh, do some good, um, in the community. And I, the other thing I would mention, so I have, it's having a conversation with uh, Kyle Cronk, who's the CEO of the Southside YMCA a couple of weeks ago, and they're going to be doing a, um, touch a truck event in September, uh, out of the Shelton branch of the YMCA. And, uh, they were super interested in, in having us participate in that as well. Um, so Loretta, I can make a connection for you to talk to Kyle.
Okay, great.
Uh, the, the details, but, uh, good, good to be out there and, and doing some positive things, flying the county flag. So appreciate it.
Good deal. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Next up, um, we've got some information about road improvement districts. And I know Commissioners, we've, we've talked about this a bit in the past. Um, what you have in your packet today is just some basic information about what is a road improvement district, how are they formed, what are the, the RCWs around the district? And the reason we're bringing this to you is you may recall that a while back, the folks out off of Shetland Road were interested in forming an RID. So this is a private gravel road, um, serving a community, a fairly large community that is just west of Lake Limerick. And like many folks that live in neighborhoods, they are faced with the annual cost of maintaining their gravel road and, um, may or may not have all of the, the means to, to do that in terms of either their own equipment or ability to contract or, or do it in a way that they, they would like to see it done differently, basically. So they were interested in, um, forming a road improvement district and converting the gravel road to a chip seal road and turn that road over as a county road. So what's the, what's the process? What's involved? What might this cost and, and how are those costs paid for? Um, so Mike and team have dusted off some old numbers uh, to take a look at what would it cost to bring this road up to a county standard. And, um, are, and glad to present that information and then answer any questions Commissioners may have about just the overall process and, uh, the, the role that the county plays, whether it be in shepherding through the process and/or the financial role that the county plays in this process. Before we get going, any questions on the materials themselves about RID?
Commissioners, any questions? Okay, probably will be some as we move through, but it doesn't sound like any right now.
Okay. So Mike, um, just to give us a, a ballparky, you've got some numbers on, maybe just to go over what the condition of Shetland Road is at this time and, and what it might take to bring the road up to.
Yes, Shetland Road is a gravel surface. It is, uh, it is twenty-four to twenty-six feet wide. Uh, there is four cross culverts, uh, in the area that would need to be replaced. Um, there is a one section that has some drainage, uh, where the water actually gets on the road. So the road section there would have to be raised, uh, for a short, uh, short area. Um, prepping that up and chip sealing it, uh, with county forces and stuff, I think my, our estimate is in the three sixty to three seventy, uh, three hundred and seventy thousand dollar range. Um, recently, the price of oil has, has, uh, went up about twenty percent. So there's always that, uh, concern of when, when we were going to do this. And, and we obviously wouldn't be prepared for it to be constructed this year. But if it was next year, if oil went up a little more, then, you know, that's going to vary. So, um, that would be, you know, that would be our main concern about anything moving around, uh, more than, more than what the original estimates, so. That's about what I got.
So, and road improvement districts can be initiated two different ways. The county can initiate the, the district or Commissioners may receive a petition from landowners to create the district. And once that is received, then there is a hearing that is set. And, um, an estimate of what the, an assessment role would look like. And then there is a formation hearing. And I want to be clear that if we were to proceed with an RID, there are, um, costs and time involved with Public Works. But I see Lisa jumped on here. It also would trickle over, ma- much like, um, the lake districts that you've recently created. So there's impacts on other departments as well. And Lisa, maybe you could speak to that a little bit?
I would. And RID is a little different than your lake districts, um, only in that it's usually an annual assessment. So it's built separately than, from the tax statements, separate assessment, separate billing process, separate collection process. Um, we would want to talk about building in some costs for the Treasurers Office to do that as part of the, um, plan. Um, I was just going to speak a little bit about the cost, because if, if you're talking three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that's not a lot of money to go out and bond for. And I'm not sure, I mean, we may want to do a bank loan for that. I didn't know what you're looking at time-wise. Is this a five-year, a ten-year? I mean, all of that needs to be discussed as well, so. That's all I have for right now.
Perfect. Thank you. So on that, just talking about the, the loan or the bond, when, when would that request, I guess, when would that go before, when would we, when would we make a decision on that? Would it be at the time of construction? Or after construction? Or I'm, I'm assuming that it would be before.
They're, they're done pretty close in conjunction with the actual, um, improvement. So as part of your resolution in creating this district, you would also create a resolution or as part of that, you know, the loan or bond process in which you're going to pay for this. But you would need to know, because you're borrowing the money, you need to pretty much know what your costs are going to be at the time, so.
Yeah, and that, that's a necessary part of creating the assessment role for the district.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Nettie?
Yeah, uh, Commissioners, you know, when we talk about this, this is a very important, important subject. I just hope that, uh, we establish as we start to move in this direction. And I think there are opportunities where we should. Uh, I've seen them. I've talked to Loretta about some of them. I always, uh, want us to remember though, anytime we do something like this, we're, we're going to take on a debit, basically, not just how much we put into it, but the long-term cost of maintaining any roads that we put together and the liabilities and stuff that comes with them. So that even what, once it established the cost on in there, our costs will continue from then on, uh, as, as the county. I would hope that, uh, whenever we decide to do this, we start to talk about how much investment we will put into it, whether we will put a lot of investment, a small amount of investment. But I think before we even do anything, we need to ask one major question, and that's whether or not it is a benefit to the whole county or just a small group of people or, because it is their private property. Are we going to invest money to improve their private property? Uh, or we invest money that will improve the county and access throughout the county, not just to residential area? Now, there are times we can help and put together an RID and we don't take on any costs. But we still will take on the, the debt at the end, uh, for trying to maintain the road. I hope whatever we set up, that we establish a strict requirement, a strict requirement, because anything we do with this is not set up for us. It is set up for the future and how all future Commissions will deal with this issue. So I hope we set up a strict, uh, requirement to utilize tip cap. That's the reason why it was born, to make sure that we can protect against personal preferences or political pressures, but that the citizen group goes through and establishes that these are the directions that we need to look at. Now, of course, later on, when we're talking percentages, that's going to be us and up to us completely. There's no way around that. But at least on whether or not it should be, uh, prioritized or not prioritized, it should go through our Citizen Committee to help maintain and make sure that no future Commissioner or Commission do things, uh, for their own neighborhood or anything like that. It's just a, a, a great policy to have. And that's why we created them, to separate the, the, us from the citizens and have their ability to have their input separate from, from any political pressure.
Loretta, how have we handled these in the past? Have we ever done one?
There have been, I believe, two, maybe three RIDs in the past, and they were years and years and years ago. River Hill, there was a, an RID in River Hill and, oh my goodness.
Harstine Island Bridge, number one?
Yes, correct. And other than that, I'm not recalling. It's, it's not um, a super common practice, Commissioner Shute, because it's a pretty rigorous process. And, um, it can be fairly time coming. Oftentimes, it, uh, fails the test of meeting the percent of folks that are in support. So it, it doesn't pass the, the vote, if you will. Um, in this case, with the Chelton community, they've done a ton of legwork. And it sounds as though a very good majority of the community is very supportive of, of forming an RID.
Yeah. It'd be great if they, if they could, um, and I think they've in the past gathered some signatures. Um, it'd be great if they could just uh, renew that or, you know, bring that back to us and then go in front of Tip Cap, uh, this summer. Um, at least get that part of the process started. Um, and then kick it back to us. I think, um, one of the things that I heard from the group when I met with them, uh, a few, a couple of months ago, I guess, probably at this point, you know, it's, it's been difficult. You know, school buses won't go up there. Um, it's difficult for kids and families to get, you know, have access to get on the bus. And, you know, in particular, when the, in the weather, um, you know, and so I, I want to be sympathetic to that. I think that's a, that's a real issue for families out there.
Yeah.
But I'd like to see the petition come back in front of us and, and go that route, um, and then just start evaluating it. And, and, uh, I know it sounds like it's been quite a while since we've been through this process as a county. But, um, you know, if there, if that past practice was, uh, was worked, uh, I, I would be open to utilizing the same process that we went through uh, the last time that this happened. Um, if there are staff recommendations on, um, improvements from that previous process, then I'd, I'd be open to hearing what those are as well.
How many parcels are we talking about?
I want to say seventy-some, Mike, seventy, yeah, quite a few.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's, it's a bit unusual in that the, the road improvements themselves will be, um, the, well, the majority of the users do not front on the road. So the gravel road goes through probably, eh, maybe a little more than a dozen, and the rest of them are in the development at the end of that road.
One of the places that something like this could also come in handy, we all know I'm very much in favor of doing something with Razor Road. I think it's absolutely necessary. I think it's extremely beneficial to the county, being able to get off of Highway three and get all the way to Shelton or Olympia, uh, in tough times or accidents or catastrophes, it would be beneficial to everybody. It would help alleviate some of the traffic off, allow another access to the backside of maybe Lakeland Village. There, there's all kinds of options. But with that, even though I really want to help this commu- community, I also believe that this is an opportunity for them to pay some of their share. That's why the percentage of the RID is something that I was talking about. Um, the reason why I say that, when they buy property in these locations, they buy it knowing that the value is low because of the access. So there, they purchased it with the idea of getting a lower price because of the access and they benefited from that. Currently, like I said, uh, Razor Road, they have, uh, a, a, a road association that has failed three times. So they're all supposed to be paying different things in, into some of this. It would make sense that they would pay into this as well. So that maybe if we were to go forward with such a major project, it's going to cost huge amounts of money, that those community members who will benefit greatly from it also pay some percentage, uh, of the actual improvement. Uh, but again, But again, I think that should be established and looked at through the, the tip cap, of course, first, just to see if it's even something that's viable and we should be doing it. We do know we're supposed to be careful anytime we are lending our, our credit. Because in a sense, these RIDs, that is lending our credit, we just should go through a rigorous process before we do. If we're going to pay for it first and then get money back out of it. Now, if they're just liable and it's just on them, that's a different story. But I think that the county would be the one, the borrowings.
Loretta and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, the folks that are kind of leading this effort at the community are very much of the mindset that they will have to be contributing.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, and generally with an RID, it is the property owners that are assuming all of the costs of the construction of the road. The county does have to lend its credit in order to get the loan to pay for it to be done. And it will be through that assessment process from those homeowners that it's repaid. So.
Yep, that's what I assumed as well. I'm just saying it could also be done in a different manner for a bigger project that like we've been looking at for Razor Road. We may be able to ask them to take on some of the burden as well instead of just the county. It may be a smaller amount, but they already are paying into it. And it's good to have skin in the game for such a major project because that's many miles. But I think they should, if you have an RID, you should be carrying the burden. That's what it was meant for.
Correct. And you raised some great points in that this is one of several locations throughout the county that potentially folks could come forward and request formation of an RID. We, really, this has been, oh, the first one in many, many years. All right, so I, for follow up items, will need to talk a little bit more process wise and check in with Tim Whitehead and follow up with, with Lisa on some other details. I also hear Commissioners talking about potential criteria and decision making about the county's participation in the, the finance side on RIDs to consider and then talk with the, the folks at Shetland about resubmitting their petition and signatures and bring that board, or bring back to the Commission for, for consideration.
I think it was to bring the tip cap first for consideration.
Yes. All right, am I missing anything?
I think that, I think that's a good capture of the conversation.
Okay. Mike, am I missing anything?
We're good.
All right, we're good.
Just a real quick question. What about easements? Because I know on Razor Road, there's no road there existing anyway. So what would that process be?
For Razor Road Commissioner specific?
Yeah, yeah, for easements or if there's any potential easements on Shelton Road or Shetland Road also.
Right, okay, so I'll, I'll start with Razor Road. Razor is kind of a mix. So there are existing private easements for a good portion of what would be an alignment that would connect all the way through. With the exception of a gap right around the middle. And that gap is how many, what's the distance of that?
Two thousand seven hundred feet.
There you go. So that portion, there would need to be right away acquired. And however that be acquired by purchase or donation or whatever. But there's that piece that needs to be acquired. For the remainder of it, if the, if the road were to be converted and adopted into the county road system, those easements would need to be dedicated to the county and conveyed so that we have a clear corridor for that right of way. And then on Shetland Road itself, so with the formation of an RID, a condition of turning that over or dedicating that to the county would be a condition of dedicating that right of way as well. So property owners that, that own the property and have an easement for, for the road would need to deed that to Mason County.
Okay, great, thank you.
And that has a value associated with it, right? So it's, there will be an assumed value. And that dedication may be the contribution for their, their cost for the, the improvements.
Commissioner Trask, many years ago, on the Razor Road, that piece that where it doesn't connect, I wasn't able to get a letter of intent to give us that, that property that right of way. But that was a while ago and since then, the property has changed hands. So hopefully these new people would still be, it's very beneficial to their property, their values if they do. But Loretta, has anybody talked to the new owner?
I'm not sure about recently, Commissioner Netherland, but I do know that we've been out securing rights of entry to do the preliminary alignment through there. So that's, that's one thing. It's great to have folks that are willing and able to donate, but we need to find the best alignment to identify, well, where are, where is that donation?
Well, one thing to share with you, I, I spoke to the, one of the Realtors on one side of that, that deal. And they actually utilized that letter as a reason for them to purchase that property. With the idea that it would go through. But again, minds change after five years.
Sure.
And there's nothing guaranteed until we go through the action of providing our side of it to get that, that right of way.
Yep.
But I'd be willing to talk to them again, reach out. If it comes to that point and you guys want me to, I'd be more than happy to reach out and get through to their Realtors and have them meet with us and see if we can put something together. Because I'd much rather have them give it to us. That'd be a great benefit to them. Maybe they're offset on the RID if we do an RID, where, where they pay for part of it.
Yep. And Mike and Mike and Dave and I'm not sure who all has been out, but definitely have been out in the field, talking with individuals. So yes, if we need your assist, we'll definitely give you a ring. But so far, I think all is, is looking pretty good on the communication front.
You probably haven't been talking to them, there's no home or anything on that property.
No, there is not. But we have contacts with the property owners.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else, Loretta, on RIDs or?
I think that's it for now, the saga will continue.
I had two quick items, if there's nothing else. Loretta for, or Mike with your briefing? Okay. One, I think all the Commissioners got this email. I know Diane forwarded it on. But having some crosswalk lights up at Lynch Cove, I think Commissioner Netherland, you're probably more familiar with this area. But we may have all reached out to you already on that one. But just maybe bring some information back to us. It sounds like DOT was doing what DOT does when it comes to asking for lighting and crosswalk assistance. And then the other one that I wanted to talk about, I was having a conversation with some folks out on Shelton Springs, out in outside of the city limits, in the unincorporated area. But the, about speed being an issue. If we could get the, if we can get our radar signs out in the area of the 1500 block, Shelton Springs, kind of as in between there and 101, that'd be really great. I've, I've also reached out to the Sheriff's Office to see if they can, they can do some enforcement or just to, you know, increase some presence in that area. But it sounds like they're having some issues with folks cruising through there at a higher speed. So if we could deploy those, that'd be really helpful.
Okay, great.
Same request for down the Old Bell for a highway closer to the bridge down there. Maybe we can move a sign in and out of that area, gradually going down that road to hit different areas and keep them on their toes.
Yeah, and when you get those out, just let us know. So we know.
Okay.
And if I may, Commissioner, I have something else too, man?
Yeah, go for it.
I don't know if you all received this letter from Jerry O'Hale, it looks like, regarding the sewer system, North Bay's annual increases and stuff. Loretta, I would appreciate if you guys could put something together to give me our explanation on this side of it, because I'm going to be going there. And remember, we talked about it sufficiently a while back, that they will eventually be making a date for us to come out and talk about this with the community, with the charges and stuff and why we charge what we charge. So if you could put something together so I could have that. In the meantime, while I'm talking to people. But this back page that, that I hope you guys have the same letter, where it breaks down using seven CCFs per month for the sewer rates and calling us the highest in the state. Since we don't go off of a number like that, I don't know, you know, how they could use that as a basis. But if you could see what our gallons are, how, how we're doing it, and Belfair is going to be completely different because we, you know, most of our money is brought in from the retail sector, not from the residential. And nobody monitors the residential. So there is no, no cap on what they're using. As they're saying that, you know, some of the things are so different. So if you wouldn't mind, maybe just reaching out to me, we can go over this email or this letter. Did you guys get it? Because I just got it in the mail, you did?
I did not.
I have not seen it.
I'm going to have this copied and I'll have it shared with them. I don't even know how it got in my office. It wasn't in my box. I literally was wanting some stuff and there it was. And it was only written on the third, so it hasn't been here that long. So I'll go ahead and I'll have copies, I'll have it shared. But maybe you could break down for us, because we're all going to be, being asked questions about this.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Trask, anything for Loretta or Mark or Mike? Or Mark, I guess. Mike would probably be happy to defer to Mark.
None of the above.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we're running a little bit behind here. But we do have a closed session pursuant to RCW 4230, 140, Section 4, for a labor discussion. That is scheduled to be a 30 minute closed session. So the time is 11:07. We'll plan to be back in public session at 11:37.
Are we going to chambers again?
Yeah, I think we're going to either be there or Mark's office, I think. So we'll try for the chambers first.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, welcome back. We'll be back on the record with the public here at 11:52 AM. And move into our Support Services briefing with Mark. Mark, go ahead, take it away.
Thanks, Commissioners. First, we're going to start off, make sure I've got Jen on here. I just, there she is. Morning, Jen.
Morning. Okay, sorry, I was waiting. I thought you were going to say something else.
Morning.
So we have the April financials. So beginning on page two, we have the current expense revenue comparing this year through April and last year, so 2022 and 2021. So we have through April, 16 million, 275,799 dollars collected in the general fund. That's 40% of our budgeted revenue compared to last year. We were at 15 million, 211,745, which was 39%. So it looks like the Treasurer's Office is where we are being carried in that increase of 1 million 64,000. If there are no questions, we'll move on to page three and four, the Treasurer's Office detail. So on pages three and four, oh, and I'll share my screen, sorry, I forgot to do that. So you can follow along. Okay, so here's the current expense revenue. There's the 16 million for this year and the 15 million for last year. And moving on to the Treasurer's Office revenue detail, this is page three and four. We have collected through April of this year, 12 million, 179,873 dollars compared to last year, 10 million, 711,459 dollars. We're at 45% of our total revenue collections this year that were budgeted. And then last year, we were at 41%. And the major increases this year are in the PUD privilege tax. We received close to 800,000 this year, and that's shown up here. Last year, we had not received the PUD privilege tax in April or through April yet. But we did receive it later on. I don't know what month it was, maybe May. So anyway, that was collected early, it looks like. And then the city county assistance, that's right here. We've received 1 million, 189,000. Where last year, we had only received a little less than 500,000. And then the other big change is the sales tax. So that's close to, close to 300,000 increase, 274,000 roughly. So those are the big places where we see the additional collections. The property taxes are just slightly less this year than they were last year. And that is just a timing thing, most likely. So any questions on the Treasurer's revenue before we move on? Okay. On the expenditures, page five, we've expended a total of 12 million, 941,398 dollars through April. And this is in the general fund, compared to last year, 12 million, 428,155 dollars. We're at 30% of our budgeted expenditures this year compared to 31% last year. So we're right in where we should be with our expenditures. The benchmark is 33.33% through April. There's a couple of funds that look like they're over their benchmark. One of them is Parks. But they have a, a budget amendment coming. And then like the Assessors Office and the Treasurer, I know that they have, I believe it's Terror Scan that's due early in the year. And so their expenditures look a little bit higher towards the beginning of the year. But that's nothing to be alarmed about. It's not a perfect, you know, one, one twelfth expended each year for them. So moving on to page six of the handout, the special funds, six year revenue streams comparison, and there's current expense in here too. It's just specific revenue streams comparison. So we have community development. They're down a little bit this year, about 300,000. But that, I talked to Kathy Chazé this morning, and she is expecting about 160,000 from Harbor Custom in receivables this year coming in. And then, any day, she said. And then 30,000 in grant funds is included in this amount from last year. And then last year, they, they had approximately 66,000 in commercial permits that they don't have this year. So that is pretty close to that 300,000. So I don't think it's anything to be alarmed about.
No, that's almost a 30% drop. I'm wondering if, if this is a tell of what's going on or just an anomaly.
Yeah, possibly, but I, I don't, I don't know. Talking to Kathy, she didn't think it was too alarming because of those three items that I named off that are close to that $300,000 difference. So, so we'll see as the year continues on. The property taxes again are just slightly lower than they were last year. And that might have something to do with the timing of the property tax statements going out or something like that. The sales tax again is, it's up, it's up about, what is it, 274,000? The rural sales and use tax is up as well. About 24,000. The filings are down. So the homelessness prevention filings, that's down about 50,000. The homelessness prevention filings, that's down about fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand. That might have something to do with. Interest rates rising, I don't know. The lodging tax is up about fifty-seven thousand and then REIT is still up, so. So that's still looking pretty good. Moving on to the the sales.
Jennifer, it's Lisa.
Hi, Lisa.
I just wanted to respond back to the property taxes. So April thirtieth fell on a Saturday, so we were still accepting payments on Monday, May second. And we were processing property tax payments through last Friday. It's that came in the mail, so you will see a difference probably.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. I figured it was something like that, so.
Yep.
It's great, thanks. On the sales tax, we've collected two point. Six-six-seven thousand this year through April. And if things continue, we're expecting to receive about eight point, close to eight point seven million. If we were to receive everything from May to December exactly as we had last year, plus. What we, what we have received from January through April. It would be close to that eight point six million. We only budgeted seven point two, so sales tax is looking great. On the six-year financial recap, page eight. We have the current expense cash at the end of April was twenty-five million. Again, we're at forty percent of our budgeted revenues received in current expense and then thirty percent of our. Budgeted expenditures expended. And then moving on to. Page nine, the special fund cash balances, we are at a total of. Close to forty-seven million. Which is. Much higher than the previous five years, and that does include the American Rescue Plan Act of close to five million dollars, but still we're. Well above where we normally are. And. Nothing looks too alarming on any of the cash balances.
Ben, could you describe the Community Support Service Fund, please?
Fund one seventeen.
Yeah, I don't have the numbers next to me. Community Support Service Fund.
So they have grant funding that is not currently budgeted. So that's probably what's, what's happening there is they have some grant, grant funding. I believe that's what that is. I can look into that.
I think it actually, do you think that that has something to do with the foundational public health model? The different revenues that we're receiving for that, Jen?
That's fund one fifty. One fifty.
Public health.
Yeah, so I don't think so. They have a huge grant going into the supplemental. That's going to be adopted tomorrow for the, to set the public hearing for June seventh. So I think that's what that is, is that grant funding, possibly it's. It was received in advance, but I can check on that. And I'll let you know, Commissioners.
Are we doing anything to feed the North Mason or North Bay K-Symlet utility extra monies?
No, they, they just. Are one that actually does well in our utilities. They have enough customers and. The, the fee is based on, you know, it goes up by the CPI every year, so that might be something we want to look at is. You know, adjusting their rates to. Not be the CPI, but be based on the need.
That's what I was a little bit about what I brought up a little earlier, and now that we're looking at the numbers, I see. Why we need to have further conversations. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so if there's no other questions on the cash balances, we'll move on to page ten. Which is the motor pool. So we are currently at thirty-five percent, thirty-five point two-six percent expended through April. The benchmark is thirty-three point three-three percent. And again, this is not a perfect one twelfth always due to the. The motor pool capital outfits there, we've expended fifty-five percent of the total budgeted and. The fuel is really high, of course, because we budgeted based on. What had happened the previous year and not, you know, the super high rates that are. Currently in place, so I'll take a look at that and maybe come back with an ask if needed.
It still seems so low. I'm, I'm, I'm always having a hard time because of the success of this program when I'm looking at it, because it just seems so. Like something's gotta be wrong or something was so wrong before, because these numbers just are so different than what we used to charge out and. Everything we used to do, it just seems so low.
Yeah, it's been working out really great.
I keep expecting for something bad to happen, I guess, is what I'm saying. Doesn't look like it's going to, but it sure feels like it when I see how low that is. You know, a budget of one point five million for all the things we've been doing and we're there, we're staying there. Good work to everybody involved with that. That's a lot of money difference.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, if there's nothing else on that, I'll move on to the revenue and the expenditures for the special funds. So this is page eleven, the revenue for the special funds. We've received nineteen million, seven hundred eighteen thousand, nine hundred sixty-two dollars through April this year compared to last year. Sixteen million, seven hundred one thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. We're at twenty-seven percent of our budget this year compared to thirty-eight percent last year, but we have, you know, about. Thirty million dollars more budgeted, just a small, small amount there. So, yeah, it looks like the community support services, they. They've received four million this year compared to, you know, close to a million last year, so. That would be my guess on that huge cash influx, but I'll send you an email, Commissioners, and let you know for sure. Anything on this before we move on to the last page, the expenditures?
Nope.
So the expenditures for the special funds were at fourteen million, two hundred seventy-eight thousand, thirty-four dollars this year compared to. Fourteen million, three hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars last year. We're seventeen percent this year compared to twenty-eight percent last year of the overall expenditure budgets. So any, any questions other than Fund one seventeen? That I need to follow up on?
Not for me.
Great, thank you. So the next thing that I have is, I'll stop sharing. And actually, I'll share the ARPA spreadsheet. We have the American Rescue Plan Act. I just wanted to give you an update of where we're at. So. We have. We've received six point four eight four million. Last June of twenty twenty-one and we're set to receive the second round this June. And. We've obligated close to six point five million. And we have on here the request. For the jail elevator and doors of eighty thousand, which. Kate helped Kelly Frazier fill out the. The request spreadsheet, so we'll get to that. In a moment, but I wanted to go through the overview of the current projects that have been approved. Board approved the six point four eight eight million. So for Public Works, we have the Russell Wood Water Well and Reserve or Reservoir. And that is under category D and that's approved for two hundred thousand. We also have the Beards Cove AC mainline replacement under category. These are all under category D for Public Works that I'm naming off here. That one's approved for a hundred thousand. We have the Belfair PS number one improvement for a hundred and fifty thousand. The Belfair PS number three improvement for a hundred and eighty thousand. And the Lakeland Pump Station, forty-two thousand. So all of those projects are still in the preliminary phases, it looks like. Nothing has been expended on any of them, so. Richard was doing some outreach to Department of Health on the Russell Wood and then. Doing some other outreach with different. Different players. The grinder pumps for a hundred and fifty-one thousand under this category have been ordered and I believe they may have been received. But. No invoice has been received yet from correct equipment, so those have been incurred anyway, so that's good news. On the treasurer's property tax, this is under category A up here. We have a hundred and twenty-five thousand approved for small businesses. I mean, I'm sorry, for household and then seventy-five thousand for small businesses. And. Most of that, or not most, but the majority of the, that. The household has been expended, so there's thirty-five thousand remaining or thirty-six thousand, close to. And then on the small business, fifty thousand. The treasurer would like to ask to move. Some of the small business, if not all, to the household, so I would propose that maybe we just say either or in. In moving that money around so that we don't have to keep coming back and asking.
So you mean just to make it so that it's, they're combined, so the household and the small businesses are combined?
I think that we should keep. Keep them. Keep track of them separately, but just. Maybe state that the treasurer can move around as needed. I don't, I don't know, we can work on the wording. I haven't talked to Mark about that, so I don't know what, what your thoughts are on that, Mark.
Oh, absolutely, we can, we can work with the treasurer's office to. To, to really utilize that money where it's needed, I think, and Lisa knows best.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in. There's probably three or four businesses that may still apply. But the amounts that they need won't come nowhere near that amount, where I'm going to have. Probably more parcels under the real property or households that could use that money this year, so. And this would probably be this year and next year are the only two years that they, that money would apply to delinquent property taxes. For foreclosure purposes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, if I can use it for both, that would be awesome, and then I wouldn't have to keep coming back.
Yeah, I think that would be easier, so we'll, we'll see what we can do on that front, if that's okay with you, Commissioners.
Well, good with me. Flexibility's good.
Okay. Great, thank you. The prosecutor's office, the second floor expansion, Kelly Frazier and his team have been working on that and it's almost complete. And I believe it's well under the seventy-five thousand that was approved, so there may be some, some money to move around there. The EDC Small Business Grants and the prosecutor's office, that's under category C, the seventy-five thousand here. So that's the revenue loss. The EDC Small Business Grants, that's up here under category A. The, the five hundred thousand, they have twenty-five thousand remaining for, for their time for the administration. And that's in, in process right now. Kate's been working with the EDC on the documentation for that. So that's getting wrapped up, so that's good news. The Mason County Sheriff's Office, the body cameras and install, that's under category C down here, so the cameras, as you know, are done. The installs, there's about close to twenty-six thousand remaining left to spend. And that will be spent on new vehicles. So that will get expended, it sounds like. The public records software, the GovQA, that's under category C, that's right here, and. We will be asking to cover. The cost for the next four years, so an additional seventy-two, seventy-two thousand will be. Will be the ask going forward, so that will be a request that you'll see on here in the future. The IT infrastructure, the backbone storage upgrade, that's under category D and that's for broadband, that is. Done and there's a hundred and sixty-three dollars remaining. Between what was originally. Requested and what was actually spent, so that's been added back into the pot down here. The Housing Authority, that's under category A. And that. Has been drafted, the agreement has been drafted and. The contract is ready, but we're still waiting on some information from the Housing Authority to move forward. Basically, I think to see if the need is still there because there was other, other money possibly available to them. The Ark of the Peninsula is thirty-five thousand, that agreement has been drafted. We were waiting on a SAM's number, but I believe that's been received. So that's ready for signing. So on PUD one, we have the customer arrearsages, that's under category A, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. There we are. They have. Expended about thirteen thousand and have about a hundred and twelve thousand remaining. But they think they're going to expend all of it before the end of twenty twenty-three. Eggit Beach for PUD one, that's under a category D down here. And that's the five hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The project, project is started. It's less than fifty percent complete, but the project completion estimated date is. Before the end of this year. And Viewcrest. The storage upgrade, that project has been started. And we have expended. Some on that project, a hundred and eleven thousand, the remaining forty-seven thousand roughly. Will be expended, it sounds like in the next few months. And moving on to Hood Canals Projects, we have under, under category A. A hundred and ten thousand for customer arrearsages and they've expended about twenty-two thousand. Have about eighty-eight thousand remaining and. It looks like they're anticipating completing that by the end of this year. And also for Hood Canal Communications, we have under category D. The Eldon Fiber Build Out, so that project. Has been started. I don't think any, yeah, nothing's been expended. And it's about ten percent complete. And they, they estimate it will be complete by about September of this year. And also for Hood Canal, their last project that we have on here, under category D for the Colony Surf Fiber Build Out. Right here. That one is. They've completed the engineering and design work and. So about seventy-five percent of the project is complete. We just have not received a bill yet. They anticipate that they will request reimbursement for, of the project funds. At the end of June and the final funding by September thirtieth. And we did receive an update that's not in your packet on. On Dale Webb or from Dale Webb on. This one is the four hundred and fifty thousand for. The Belford Water. So the project is in the planning stages, working with hydrologists to get proper placement of the well. Oh, sorry, this is. Yeah, that's the right project. Sorry, there's so many. So anyway. The project is fifty percent or less complete and. The project is fifty percent or less complete and. They would like to be completed and using the well by the end of twenty twenty three, so. That's all the updates that we have on all of the. The projects that we have, any, any questions on that?
Not on the projects you have, but have we received the information from Astound or Wave Media? Regarding the area on Tuana Heights, they want to hook up?
I have not received any information and I don't believe that Kate or Mark have, but I'm not positive on that, Mark might, might know.
I have not received anything.
Thank you.
So if they, if we could get a contact name for them, Jen and Kate have been busy putting together our. Questions that we're going to be sending out there and this will be utilized by the board, the responses to those questionnaires will be utilized aboard. By the board to allocate the, the next. Round of funding that's coming in in June.
So the last thing that I have for you on this whole ARPA update is. The. Elevator and, and doors, so Kate helped Kelly fill out the questionnaire. And so I was wondering if you had any, any questions on how that was filled out or, or if we were okay to. To get this project approved, to put it on the, the approval for a board meet, a future board meeting commissioners.
So I'm good with it, I think Kelly did a nice job.
Yeah, I think they did a great job, thanks to Kelly and Kate.
Great, thank you very much and, and actually one more thing, so at the bottom of this spreadsheet. We had in here the temporary staff. To address COVID, the original request was two hundred and fifty thousand, but. And this, I'm not sure, well, this is just a formula, I need to take that out, it's just an error, the obligated by contract is not. It's actually not a hundred and fifty seven thousand nine hundred twenty two dollars. So anyway, I'll remove that for the next briefing, but the actual. Request is going to be approximately four hundred and fifty thousand. If we want to keep. Our staff on to help with this grant through the end of twenty twenty six, which. I would highly recommend doing that, there's a lot of projects to manage and this is a full time job, so. It's definitely not something that Mark or I could take on on our own. So I wanted to see if I could increase that request of four hundred and fifty thousand commissioners.
I'm supportive.
Absolutely.
Right, thank you, that's all that I have.
I just sent both you and Mark that same contact information I sent you earlier.
Okay, it looks like next we have. Becky with a Board of Equalization application?
Yes, good afternoon commissioners. I'm requesting approval to place on the May ten action agenda, the reappointment of Janice Loomis. To fill a regular member position on the board, this is the full three year term that would end on May thirty one of twenty twenty five.
I'm supportive commissioners.
Good.
Thank you.
Next item?
So the next item is me. Let's see, I've got a lot on the list for you, so the first one I want to talk to you about is. The possible reorganization of our Community Services Department, so currently this is made up of our, our Public Health Department and. Department of Community Development. And I, I did a little write up for you and I provided some documentation associated with currently how it looks. Included in this, you know, I went and looked in and looked at and thank you to Kel and. And her staff for providing me, Kathy, for providing me documentation associated with the revenues that are received through DCD, so. I want to make sure that I, that I wasn't confusing in how I presented it, I think Cal had asked me a question about it. After the fact, but so, so long range planning is something that we currently do not. Charge a fee for. So the fees that we collect are specific to the. I don't see that on there. Oh, there it is, it's on page. Sixty three of your handouts or of, of the actual briefing materials. And so what you see here is, is really all of our current planning, so the current planning hearings examiner, building and administration. These are the revenues and expenditures that we've collected from two thousand seventeen through twenty twenty one. And you can see that we are consistently collecting more than what we are actually spending within those areas. So I feel like they have some capacity to do that and I think it always so is representative of the volume of work that's coming through. Also wanted to touch a little bit on our. Our, our Public Health Department and I wish Dave was here, but Dave is, is out ill today. But he actually, him and I have talked quite a bit about this new foundational public health model that is coming to the county and how it's really. Expanding, providing additional funding for the different services out there that could be, be provided at the county level. Through public health. And so one of the complications of splitting these. Individual, individual departments would be. I'm currently charging a portion of Dave Wyndham's salary and benefits to DCD. And so if we were to take him out of DCD and put him all into public health, how would we redistribute those costs? You would actually see that on page sixty four, so it talks about the. Emergency preparedness, foundational public health system funding, which is where the majority of it would go. There are some mental health dollars, septic permit, food permit and COVID cares. So that's how those, those costs would be redistributed. I'm gonna apologize, I'm jumping around because I had a different order in my presentation, but when you look at the, the actual organizational charts. You'll see there that the public health or chart is on page sixty one. This is currently, would it be easier if I shared my screen with you guys so you could see this? So this is our, this is what our public health organizational chart would look like. You see that the major functions that fall underneath public health would be environmental health, community health and then our fiscal team. And so that's, that's what it would look like if we separated it out of community services. And then if we scroll down and we've got some names in here and you can see the, you can see really the, the scope of responsibilities and the. The, the. Really the size of the team that Dave is, is managing underneath this public health, which just from a. Just from a management perspective, I feel like that's very representative of the amount of work that it takes for, for. To do that and focus on it, so then when we add in. The permitting, building and planning side of things that all report to Kel. That too is, is a pretty sizable division in and of itself with a very broad scope of responsibilities. I think that Kel's team here and, and one of the reasons that the commissioners kind of put it all under community services in the first place. My understanding was to make sure that the communication existed between environmental health and, and, and some of our folks in DCD. And, and that's because the work that they do really requires them to communicate quite a bit. Kel's division would actually also communicate a lot with our public works department. So I really definitely see this. Organizational structure. Allowing Kel to, to report directly to me and, and Dave would report directly to me also, so they'd be a part of my team. So being able to ensure that those communications existed and continued into the future would, would fall underneath my responsibilities. Please stop me if you have any questions throughout this. So I've already showed you this here, which is DCD revenues, this is the amount that would be coming in and I think the last one was. This is currently how the organization is set up, so you can see that under, in the middle here under communities. We have Dave Wyndham and all of those divisions, including DCD currently report through Dave to me. It's, it's just, it's a large scope of responsibility for all to be on Dave and I think that, that sometimes. Just with the volume of information that he has coming at him, his focus and, and, and the issues that have been impacting public health over the last few years. Have, have really focused his, his attention to the public health side and looking forward into the future. With this foundational public health model that's, that's coming to the county. I, I really see that, that volume of work, that scope of responsibility still remaining quite broad and large. And, and having Kel removed from that and created into a director position. Would definitely allow us to be a little bit more flexible. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Commissioners, any, any questions for Mark?
Just a statement, if you look at the sheriff's branches, there should be a lot more than that underneath that position.
Yeah, absolutely, it's not a, it's not a completely detailed organizational chart, but it definitely represented, I think. Well, what I was presenting today in terms of community services, but.
Yeah, the org chart is not to scale. Tough to fit all that in there, it's a good, it's a, also a good reminder of the public of just the, the breadth of. Work that county government has to do on their behalf every day.
Counties have that, counties have a pretty broad scope of responsibility, absolutely agree.
Yep. Yeah, I think this is, I think this is tracking well, I know I wasn't able to participate in the conversation last week and, and that there was more detail that was, that was asked for and. Provided here in this, in this briefing packet, I, I think. I, I certainly think that the combination of departments was, was appropriate a few years ago. The, for better or worse, though, the world has changed, I think, quite dramatically over the past couple of years and I think. We recognize just the level of responsibility and focus that, that Dave has had to have. On the public health side over the past couple of years and when you factor in some of the changes that are happening at the legislative level. Where they're finally beginning to recognize and fund foundational public health services at the local level. In addition to having to navigate some of the, the push toward a regional approach, I, I, I think Dave's focus is, is definitely going to have to remain. More on the public health side as, as we navigate that, plus the transition for some pretty senior management. Folks in the public health side of DCD transitioning out, and so there's definitely a lot to manage there that I think will take up. A good bit of Dave's capacity and I think on the, on the planning and permitting side, sort of the same issue, you know, we're, we're experiencing. You know, some, some growth in the county, there's a lot of technical work that has to be done on the planning and permitting side. As we continue to navigate through the post Hurst world that we're in now and, and working with the RIA plans and the Department of Ecology and just. You know, just the, the sort of effort and energy that that takes is a lot for one person to manage a department that has a portfolio. That spans public and environmental health all the way through building, planning, permitting. And fire marshal. And so I think this is just a recognition that where we are today isn't where we are. Where, where six years ago and, and where we were six years ago, you know, is, is different than where they were in the past, and so I think this is a forward looking approach and. I, I, I do think that having, you know, having everybody report to you and you sort of, you know, you. Kind of force that communication element is going to be really critical. And, and I think, you know, that, that goes for all of the directors, I think that report to the administrator is just. Making sure that they're talking and that they're, that the workflow is happening and, and I think, you know, we'll be, we'll be in a good position there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in, I, I think it's pretty exciting to see where we're headed. Sometimes change, change is hard. But I think that Mason County is definitely, definitely stepping up and accepting the challenge. So I, I'm excited to see where we're headed. And I, I, over the past two years, you can definitely see that there's a need to kind of separate the two now. Quite exciting, I guess, couple of years, but to see how both departments really stepped up and, and I mean. Kel talked about the permit time and, you know, where, where we were and where we're at now. What an accomplishment, that's, I bet, that's awesome, and then if you look at what public health did during this, the COVID adventure. It. They rocked, they were amazing. And so it just makes sense to me that splitting the two departments or splitting the department into two is the right choice.
So many years ago when this happened. On paper, things looked like they could work, but the departments would not work with each other, as a matter of fact, it was so bad at times. Because they were in two different buildings and, and blocks away that people would call, they said they couldn't understand, we go to one room and they say, well, we don't deal with that. You gotta go two blocks down over to the left to go deal with them, they get there, do one piece and say, well, the rest of it, we don't deal with that, you have to go back to. They went back and forth and it became a territorial thing, so the commission ended up having to do something different to force people to work together. With that being said, times have changed and I want to, I do not want it to go away without giving Dave a pat on the back because. The truth of the matter is they worked completely together, so now it's time, you know, we're all grown ups in the room, maybe we can separate them out again and. And it'll all be beneficial and wonderful because of it, but we can't forget what happened in the past and we also can't forget to think. The person who ended up putting them together and it was a big thing. Because when he first was going in the room, it was tough, he wasn't welcome, neither one of them, he had to really work to pull them all together. And in the end, it has been successful because they don't fight with each other, they may fight with us, but they don't fight with each other, that's a lot further than what they used to be, so. A special thank you to Dave. Before we go.
Yeah, well, Commissioner, I think I, I really appreciate you saying that and I'm sure Dave does as well, I, I, I wasn't here for the merger. I, I came in in twenty seventeen after the merger was already underway or complete in many ways, but. You could not have hired a, a more, a, a better person to, to navigate combining those two departments and I think, you know, I think this has nothing to do with. You know, Dave's leadership in the, in Department of Community Services or Development, it's, it's not about that at all, I think it's a recognition that. You know, the, the, the world has changed and I think he was the right person at the right time for that job, so your, your points are, I think, are well taken.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, you guys definitely nailed it and, and the cool part about it is the relationships that Dave has, has created will continue, right? I mean, he's, he's got the relationships with all the folks in DCD, so I really don't see too much of a change in terms of the communication side of things. And how things move. Back and forth, I, I think Dave has, has done an amazing job there and, and definitely deserves the credit for it. And, and I definitely see the changes that's coming to DCD too, right, so not only are we seeing this change on the foundational public health model side. But we're also seeing a change in the services that we provide through our, our DCD division and, and that is. I feel like Kel has created a, a good team there, probably Kel and Dave in, in concert with each other. Have created a, a pretty good team that we have there that, that I see it continuing to grow, they just. They're successful in, in attracting any fire marshal to come in, so excited to see what they can provide. And just the, the, the scope or the type of work that they do has changed over the years. And I think that there's more complexity that I foresee in the future impacting the DCD department, so. Yeah, I mean, I'm excited to see the change, I'm excited to, if, if the board is, is comfortable, which it sounds like you are. That I will move forward working with our Human Resources Department to make. Put together the process where we'll actually formally approve moving these two. Separating out public health and DCD into their own separate departments. And then we'll have to do some work in, in really defining those new roles and placing them, really redoing the job descriptions associated with both those positions.
Great, okay. Commissioners, anything else for Mark before we move on to the next item?
All right, great, thank you. So my next item is incentive pay options. So this is a, this is something that we've been working on. Really appreciate the, the work that I've got from our human resources department. They're short-staffed, but definitely standing up and, and helping out, pulling together some of this information, doing some research. I'm excited about this incentive plan because I think it's just the start for Mason County to really encourage and recognize employees throughout the entire organization that, that want to create a career within Mason County and giving them opportunities to be recognized for that work. So this is just the tip of the iceberg. It's really the, some of the low-hanging fruit. I still think that there's additional low-hanging fruit out there. But we're starting out just in terms of concept, looking at CPAs and PEs. This is, uh, this is obviously a professional licensure process that they have to go through to get it. I think there's a clear path for the, the engineering side of the group that involves getting an engineer in training, which sounds less, sounds less meaningful. I think the title could, is not representative of the work associated with getting that EIT certification. And it's definitely a step that's required in the process to finally becoming a PE. I also think on the CPA side of things, we have a number of individuals that handle finances throughout our entire county. And although this, this policy would immediately only impact one individual, I think it creates an opportunity for other individuals throughout the county to, to look at that, that option and work towards getting their CPA license. Or I think that we could actually identify some additional credentials that may be similar to, to this in the financial realm of things that would encourage folks to go out and, and continue their education and to continue to educate themselves on, on different options. And they can bring those back to Mason County. I'm just, I'm really excited about the, the focus that's going to be provided on our line-level staff in really giving them a career path to move forward. If, if we were to move forward with this right now, I think that you have about 35,000 in public works that would automatically go into place. And then you have about 40,000 per year in eligible positions that could achieve the incentive. So that's, that's exciting to me. Auditor Financial Services is really the only position now that would be impacted by this, our CFO position. But I definitely think there's a fairly long list. And, and I think that Nicole actually did some preliminary research on that, just kind of identifying all these positions out there throughout the county that have a, a financial role in, in the work that they do for the county. And this would definitely apply to those individuals also.
Great. Commissioners, any, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll make one. You know, I've been working on this for many, many years. Matter of fact, when I did my thesis for my master's degree, this was all part of it. That's, you know, the idea of incentivizing people to become better employees, better individuals, stronger in their position. You know, there was a hope that by doing this, eventually we would strengthen our bullpen, so to speak. The whole goal, I know for myself, when I was looking at it, was trying to improve the quality while also of the employee, while also improving our, or decreasing our loss of employees by increasing our retention. The hope is by doing this, that not only do we get a deeper bullpen, but we get people that are trained overall in cross modalities. Because I believe this is just the beginning. And remember, this is for the whole county, as was said earlier, not, not just for one department. This is the idea that eventually everybody will be able to partake in this and make our county stronger. Having people trained in cross modalities within their organizations will eventually create a situation, I hope, for the citizen where they have no wrong door. But the most important thing is, is the ability to keep and even entice new employees that are qualified, quality and educated. I'm very much in support of this. And I know Commissioner Trask will also want us to make sure that it's known that as we go out, this goes hand in hand with some of the other things that we're looking to do for compensation strategy and stuff, that this be known to everybody and especially amongst ourselves. This is not one piece, but a piece of the many pieces that are needed to do what we need to do to fix the county. And so I want to thank Commissioner Trask for her hard, her, her, her good work and hard work on making sure that we recognize that we continue to move forward together with all different parts of this.
Thanks, Commissioner. Another Commissioner Trask?
Oh, we've had some lively debates, Mark and I have. So thanks for not running away, Mark. Um, well, I think this, this, this goes hand in hand with the, with the next topic that, that we'll be discussing. And so I think that after we discuss that, then I'll have a few more things to say.
I kind of, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Mark.
Apologize, Commissioner Shu, please, go ahead.
No, no, I, I was just going to keep us moving, but if you had comments.
Yeah. I was going down that same path. So I, I think that it was, so I kept these two briefings separate because I wanted the board to be able to make a decision on each. But I'm glad that they're, they're put together in order because I do think that it definitely represents another piece. And, and this is a piece that I've talked a lot with Commissioner Trask about over the last week in terms of, she's really been focused on, on what, you know, we have processes in place for all of our, um, union individuals that we go through a, a union negotiation process. We tend to look at the positions at that time. We compare them to the comparables in other counties. And we try and align those individuals in a, in a competitive environment with the people that we are, are not only in competition with, but also the, the counties that are of similar size to Mason County. Because obviously size of the county impacts the amount of tax base that you have and the amount of revenue that comes in that allows us to provide these types of services. And one of the things that, that she's worked hard on before I even came here, I think at least three years ago, was to, how do we, how do we recognize or evaluate those non-represented classifications that we have in place? And I've seen it. I've seen the, I've seen the impact of it, right? We, we lose an individual that goes off to another organization to, to work. And then we have to open that position. And when we open that position, we realize, oh my gosh, we've really undervalued this position. And when we are unable to attract qualified people to come in and work for the county, we tend to, to reclassify or rearrange the position to try and attract somebody to come in. The sad part about that is we've lost the institutional knowledge that the previous holder of that position had in place. So one of the things that we can do for non-represented classifications is go out and do a compensation study. And this is something that I think goes, goes hand in hand. It can be separated, but I think that it's really looking at similar things. Because one of the things that I looked at when I was looking at the incentive plan was if we were to enact this incentive plan, then where would it place these individuals within our comparables? And granted, I only looked at the individuals that have a professional engineering requirement of the job or within that series and individuals that are on the financial side. And definitely saw the, the, the need there, the, for, for growth in those positions or to actually identify a competitive salary associated with those positions. So by doing a classification compensation study on all of our non-represented staff, that will definitely allow us to identify where we're at in the market for these positions. The cool part about it is that the board authorized me to go out with an RFP for, for labor and personnel services. The scope of how we wrote that RFP included salary and compensation stunnings. And the next item I'm going to be bringing up to the board is the fact that we actually did receive a response to that RFP. We only received one response, but I'm excited about the response that we did receive. Cabot Dow is, is the name of the vendor. And this is their specialty. This is something that they've worked a lot in, in Western Washington, up and five, up and down the I-5 corridor, both large counties, small counties, large cities, small cities. And they've done a lot of this work. And so I think that, that the nice part about it is we could actually work with, with Cabot Dow to negotiate what would it cost to actually do a compensation study on the 75 non-represented classifications that we have within Mason County.
Great. Commissioner Trask, you wanted to make some comment now?
Oh, sure. Um, yeah, the, the discussions were lively and I think both of us brought up good, good points of discussion. And so I see these two topics, actually the three topics, working together hand in hand in order to keep our people. The salary survey is spot on in order to talk about succession planning and, and getting people, or I guess incentivizing people to, to move forward with their, with their goals in life. I think that that's, that's, this is the, the right step to go. Made sure, wanted to make sure that it was the entire county, that we're not picking certain departments, but it's the entire county that's going to benefit through the salaries and the incentives. And then also, the rest of it is with, with Cabot. All of it plays together. I mean, talk about a puzzle being put together and the entire county being able to, to benefit from, from this puzzle. It, it's going to help our, our negotiations. It's going to help with, with retaining our, our employees and growing our knowledge or growing the experience that, that our, our people have. The, um, getting, being rewarded for improving the county by them getting a degree or moving on. So I think all of this works well together. And I want to thank the commissioners for putting up with my discussions also. And I just want to thank you all for, for working with me on this in, yeah, three years. Yes, finally, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Ellen, did you have anything to add?
I guess I'll just go along with saying that we're going to talk about combining them all in one. Yes, yes, and yes.
Uh, yeah, I mean, yes, all three as well. I, I think, you know, Commissioner Trask's, you know, advocacy for a salary survey over the past couple of years. It's good to see that we're able to move forward on that. And I know that, you know, this is kind of the merging of, of two priorities. One, you know, the Commissioner Trask had with the salary survey and one the Commissioner Nellin had with, you know, doing the, uh, doing the incentive program, the credential pay that, that Mark has worked on. And so I think this is a really great opportunity for us to pilot a program here in the county that, that rewards people who are, you know, working in professional licensure areas that want to continue to advance into those professional licensure areas. Most organizations at one point or another can, can suffer from brain drain when we lose really talented, hard-working folks in, in very specialized positions. And, and Mason County certainly hasn't been immune to that over the years. And so this is not by any means a silver bullet or the last step in that process. This is definitely the first step in the process of, you know, really finding ways to incentivize and reward our hard-working staff across the county that, that work in these different specialty areas. And I know that Mark and, and his team will, will continue to evaluate other opportunities for us to grow this program in a, in a meaningful way. And so I, I appreciate all the effort that's gone into it over the past few weeks and, and for Commissioner Strask and Nellin in the past couple of years of, of working to get us to this point. So I'm, I'm happy to support them in their, in their work here. And hopefully we're putting together a program that allows people to grow in place here in Mason County and make it a career.
With that, we've got to thank you also, Commissioner. I remember when I first brought up this, this was kind of a weird way of doing it. It could have died on the vine. Your ability to work outside of a box is something that we don't see a lot of in our industry. You definitely can, can see things that are not just plain inside the lines. And that's very much appreciated. I look forward for all this. I think it's, it's going to be a wonderful thing for this county. I'm going to ask all the staff, as you see this going, please don't just start dumping on Mark. He's going to get to everybody and all the different departments looking for different opportunities. Please talk to your supervisors about the different type of certifications and things that we may consider here in the near future. But just don't start dumping on him and get him mad because you don't get this. We're looking for ideas and the commission is open to these ideas as long as there's, you know, certified and things that we can prove and show that it's beneficial to the county as a whole. Because the whole thing is, is this for everybody, not just for, as Commissioner Trask said, Commissioner Shu, not just one department.
We will maybe, you know, Mark can solicit the other electeds and department heads and, and work it that way versus them having to come to us. We can, we can go to them and, and start to dive in on some of these things once we get this established and make some progress. I think it's great.
Thanks for your feedback. I, I think that, kind of like to break it down into the three items that I had on there. So I'd like to move forward in, in placing the incentive program on the, on the commission's regular agenda to, to get approval to move forward with that. And then also to get approval with the board to move forward in negotiating this contract with Cabot Dow, both for working in the negotiation side as well as doing a compensation study for our non-represented staff. So I will be, I will be bringing those three items before the board. Don't know the exact dollar amounts. I did put some estimates in there. Those are, those are estimates. I need to sit down with Cabot and, and work out the details of that contract. And, and when I do, I will bring that back to the board for final approval, if you'd like to see it. Since it does have a monetary impact, definitely want the board to be aware and feel comfortable. I think that when we've talked in a little bit in the past, Commissioner Shu, we've kind of tried to identify what's a threshold of, of, that you'd like to give the commissioner or the county administrator the authority to sign for. I feel like this amount is going to go over what I was originally thinking would be around $50,000. So I, I think that this is something that I definitely will bring back to the board to approve the final contract, if you're all three comfortable with that.
I am. And, you know, to respect Commissioner Trask, which is sooner rather than later. So I'm open to, if you have a way to be able to put it on immediately and get it in there with the verbiage, I, I'm open to that as well.
Yeah, maybe in that, in that regard, can we put a placeholder on the 24th meeting for this, the regular agenda for this? And then have you check back in with us next Monday? If you have information. And if, if you don't have information, we can always remove it from the 24th, but at least it's there and Commissioner Trask will know it's there.
I actually, I actually notified Cabot that he was the only, only response to our initial RFP. So I think he's already started kind of looking at Mason County and evaluating the work that he's going to do here. I need to providing some additional communications associated with, with where we're at on the negotiation side, but also kind of defining the work that needs to be done. And, and, and for the salary, for the non-re- And 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 for the salary, um, for the nonrepresented salary pro- um comparison process or study process. Uh, the first step in that is actually making sure that all of our nonrepresented staff have clear, accurate job descriptions. Um, so we are going to be sending information out to those individuals. Um, having them update their job description to make sure that everything that they currently do um is accurately reflected within that job description. So I'll be working with the the individual electeds and and department heads um to make sure that they know that that process is going to start. Uh, and that the sooner we get those updated job descriptions, the better the information Cabot would have to go out and start comparing. Um, but I also think that Cabot has a a lot of, uh, I think he has a data, a a pretty strong database of this information uh that's going to allow him to 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 get through it pretty quick. Nicole, did you have anything to add to that? Did you have any? No?
Nope, not much. Just, yeah, I mean, Mark and I talked about, we'll definitely um over here in H R, we'll start gathering all those position descriptions that'll need to be sent out to be looked at and reviewed and potentially updated.
Nicole, pat on the back from the commission to you for all your extra hard work that you've been putting in and all the things that uh you've had to step up uh during these trying times. So thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you.
She, it's uh easy to say, uh, Commissioner Netherland, thank you for recognizing Nicole. Nicole's um put in a lot of long days. Uh, she's she's one of those people that you work with that just sees that something needs to get done. And and she jumps up and and puts forth the effort to to go out and do it. So could not do that, could not be in the position that we're in without her and and the team in in human resources. So thanks.
Another rock star.
All right. Well, I think that that's all I had for you today.
Just Mark, one, one quick question for you. Is any any of this being added to tomorrow's agenda, or is it all good for the twenty fourth?
Wasn't the compensation uh?
That one is.
I thought it was.
So the, so as far as the if we if we were just doing the labor employment services, I would feel comfortable just working with Cabot to get that signed and go out. I'm going to actually add the total compensation study to that work. So I think that the total contract value of that is going to be more um than, but I definitely would have that contract on the twenty fourth agenda for you guys to approve.
Uh, the incentive pay, I thought that was going on.
That that I could actually put on tomorrow. Uh, Nicole has actually done a great job of preparing that draft policy. Um, we could actually get it on the agenda for tomorrow to get it passed um and then move forward with um implementation.
What's everybody's comfort level with that?
I'm there.
I'm fine with that, since we've got commitments from all three.
Okay, then Mark will will go ahead with that tomorrow then.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, uh, Commissioner, is anything for Mark?
Oh.
Okay, Commissioner, is anything for Commissioner discussion? Okay. Uh, with that, we will add entertain a motion to adjourn.
移動
Second?
Moving second to that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hey, all those opposed? Great. See everybody tomorrow morning, nine AM in the chamber.
Yay.
So, see you then.